Okay, go ahead.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody out to the Joint Planning Commission meeting with City Council for North Augun City, July 15th, 2020. We're holding this meeting virtually through Zoom as we're continuing to deal with our COVID situation. Chairman Thomas, I'd like to say welcome again to everybody. We'll begin our meeting with an invocation by or thought by Commissioner Barker, followed which a pledge of allegiance from Commissioner Arner. Commissioner Barker.
Okay, thank you. Our Father and in heaven, it is good to be here at this work session and planning commission. We're grateful for what else we're up to, which we have to be of service to the city and ask we be, help us be mindful who we are, what we represent, who we're striving to to work for, and that would be open to the comments being made and be able to perceive those things were most important to put first things first and say this name Jesus Christ, amen.
It looks like Commissioner Arner is not with us. I volunteer to give the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Mason lead the pledge of allegiance.
If you're so inclined, please rise and repeat the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. To the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God. Thank you, Commissioner Mason.
That's been smoother. I had a lot of feedback on that. That was.
Have we got, has the mayor joined us yet? I can't see Lynn, can you see if?
Yeah, I'm looking. My, my thing has given me fits.
Okay. John, are you on with us? Do you have, who's got the drawings for the discussion item?
I am here, Eric. I'm trying to just troubleshoot some issues the mayor's having on his internet, so just a second.
Okay.
Oh, I wouldn't have proposed we continue if it were just technical issues. I thought maybe he was tied up at work or something.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so.
Well, now to answer your question.
Well, that is good to hear, Brandon. Good to hear. Other than the fact that you look like you have a coronavirus like.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yeah.
It showed up in my house today. I wasn't aware of what that was. Is this more pleasant for you than coronavirus? Is this?
Did you say more pleasant?
Just trying to get Commissioner Chairman Barker. Or Councilman Barker's go here.
Is that what it looked like from down here? I had a lot closer view than that.
Hey, Ryan.
Yeah.
I actually saw a little bit more smoke after I left. After I left the meeting today and I had an appointment, it was probably about three o'clock. There was actually some smoke that was that was kind of a little bit lower down the mountainside that made me a little nervous. I, but I didn't call or anything. I just assumed they keep a pretty close tabs on it.
Yeah, I just looked. There's still smoke. I know we got crews up there still. They're just hand, yeah, they got hand crews. They probably let it burn out.
Okay. It looked like the helicopter.
That's what I'm going with right now.
That's what you're going with? Well, the helicopter looked like he disappeared and.
Yep, it looks like he's done. Yeah.
I actually got a text from a citizen who wanted to help. She texted me and said, hey, is there anything I can do to help the firemen? And, you know, she says, can I make food? Can I bring pop? Can I bring any kind of supplies? And I says, well, I think they're after talking to the fire marshal, I think they're all taken care of. So.
Yeah.
People were at least inquiring on wanting to help.
Yeah, we had a lot of support, so it was good.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
If we're still not close to having the mayor present for this, can I ask a question that's been asked to me by some neighbors? There, the trash went by and it was still Republic Services that was picking up the trash. And there was, people were asking me, you know, I'd heard that we were going to discontinue that. Is that?
We went.
That one, Ryan.
Brandon.
Yeah.
We went back to, they made a deal and went back to Republic because there's 30% increase in garbage since everybody's staying home. And it was just, we would have needed another truck, four trucks, and still we wouldn't have kept up with it, so.
Recycling and garbage are still two, are still the same thing.
Uh huh, yeah, and Republic's just picking them up for us. And I think there was something mentioned about they're doing recycling different too, so I think there is some recycling that will still go on. Isn't that right, Blake?
Yeah, you won't be, you won't be recycling with your blue can, but Dave, Dave Espinoza is working out, trying to get a couple of larger containers where you can just take all of the different recycling we were doing and just throw them into large canisters. They don't need to be, they don't need to be separated in advance. And they're purportedly going to be at the old public worksite, so stay tuned on that one.
Thank you.
You're very, very welcome, Brandon. Thank you, Cheryl.
What are the thoughts of the group? If there's any other part of the agenda we could start on that wouldn't wouldn't impede, you know, what we've delivered, what we've promised to the public?
I think we call on the regular meeting to the roll call goes three through seven.
John, is that, is that, is that acceptable? Given that, did we announce that the, that the regular meeting starts at six or at seven? Or, I mean, could we get through some of our formalities right now?
I think.
We've got the mayor on.
We're being.
Hey, well, we'll continue then with our discussion. Mayor, you we're now on item number one of our work sessions. Discussion concerning annexation of property located approximately 4,500 north, 800 east, North Cove area. This discussion will be led by the mayor.
Thank you. Chairman Thomas, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, great. Sorry for the technicalities of getting connected here. I believe we have the applicant with us. I'd like to approach this twofold, one to hear from the applicant, and then I know Rob Scott has some comments that he'd like to discuss. I did have a chance to go up this morning with John call, Dave Espinosa and tour the property. Get a little bit familiar with it, but let's start with there. If we could have the applicant talk to us first and then Rob, when he's done, if you'd address the talking points you've got, that'd be good.
The applicant.
So is the applicant Bruce Baird?
I think that's the attorney. I don't know if he is the.
I believe he's representing the applicant, because I don't see anybody else on.
Yeah, I don't either.
Well, he just noted that he couldn't get in on chat. Bruce said that he couldn't get on.
No, he is on. He just is not a panelist.
Am I on now, Mayor?
Yes, you are.
Yep, we can hear you, Bruce.
I assumed so. I just didn't know how everybody, everybody raises their, maybe somewhat differently. So I was just letting people know I was trying to get on. So John, could you bring up, whoever's controlling the screen? You could just bring up part of the, but I thought that Matt Murdock and Kenny Marriott were going to be on this call as well. I can't access the participant list from my screen. But if Matt is on or Kenny's on, they are also they're also involved in the application.
Okay, yes, Matt is, Matt is on.
Could you unmute Matt as well, please? Because he may have some things to say as well.
Okay.
Bruce, will you be making the main presentation just so we have some sense of order here?
I, I think so, although we haven't had a chance to coordinate this, Mr. Mayor, so I will do my usual best at trying to wing it. So if you can just put the screen up, then I'll have something to talk off of.
So what, what do you want put up?
Just the plan.
Yeah, the annexation plan.
So the plan, the master plan for the project. John and Rob, I know have it, and I know, I'm pretty sure the mayor has it too.
I think Lynn is, is controlling the meeting, so do you have that, Lynn?
I think so. Is that what you want to see?
No, not at all. I want the plan for where the, where the layouts are and where the housing units are going to be and the roads, etc.
It's the, it's the satellite picture that has the colored coordination of little yellows and pinks on it.
Okay, I've, I've got a couple of those.
Lynn, I think it's, it's attachment B1.
Okay.
There you go.
There you go. Could you take that to full screen, please? No, take it to full screen by clicking, no, no.
Yeah.
Yes. And now zoom it back out a little bit. More. And then scroll down a little bit, please. No, zoom it, zoom it in a little bit and scroll down. And now just scroll down. That's, that's close enough. That's close enough. So the proposal is to annex this property subject to a development agreement. We have over the course of the last three or four years met with the city staff to discuss the various layout issues, the types of units. And I wish you could see the right-hand side of the screen. Well, yeah, I can. Shoot, can you? Okay. I wish I was driving this, but I guess I'm not, so.
She's doing the best she can do, Bruce.
I know. No, 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 I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm fine. I just didn't get a chance to do a dry run. I'm sorry. I usually make sure I do a dry run because technology is always a pain in the butt. Sometimes, so anyway, excuse me, I lose my voice a little bit after a few, a few months ago. So the plan was, the meetings have tried to address the various types of uses that would be on the part, on the project and how the topography would work. Could you kill the stuff on the left-hand side of the screen where it says bookmark sheets of views? That'll give you more screen size over there. Yes, thank you very much. That's exactly what I wanted. So now we've got the whole thing up. So the, the theory was to have a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the City Council to get your generic input as to what parts of the plan you liked and what parts of the plan you didn't like. So the various pods are described as development areas with letters, and it correlates on the right-hand side with how big the pods are and how many units there are. We didn't do a, a density calculation as it was, but it's very easy to do the math just in your head essentially. For example, if you're in development area B, it's 23.1 acre, you know, one units to the acre. I'm sorry, 23.1 acres, 65 to 72 units. So that works out as approximately third to about a third of an acre or slightly bigger density. What we tried to do in designing this was to let the topography, and you can see the topo lines on the project. We tried to let the topography in some ways design the roads because it'll design, design the project because the topography will design the roads essentially. And we tried to make concessions to how various types of units would fit on the project. We also tried to make sure that to the extent that we had some higher density units, that the higher density units were buffered from the lower density existing units that are already approved in the project below it. So that was the generic theory. We tried to put, this one doesn't have parks, but we plan on, we have other maps that show, of course, an extensive networks of parks and trails all the way through it. Rob, do you remember which, which slide is the slide which has the the trails on it?
This one actually does have the trails on it.
It has, it has some of the trails. Oh, yeah, that's most of them. You're right. It doesn't, obviously, there's going to be internal trails. But you can see there's a main trail running down the shoreline trail, running down the power line corridor. You can see there's a connection plan for up in the space above the power lines, near the Forest Service area. We planned on having a gated community up above the power line. It's on either side of it. And we, we thought we'd lay it out this way and frankly, just get your opinion. We think the density works. Obviously, we'd need to do the detailed engineering later. We do it either usually after the development agreement. So we do a relatively standard form development agreement of the kind that I've worked with. And I've actually lectured for John on several land use institute matters about how to do and make development agreements that work for both the local governments and for the developers. So we could go through all of the pods, but you folks are all smart. You've all seen these things before. You saw the staff report. So Mayor, I think I'm more here to answer any questions rather than do a sales job. We think it works. We put trailhead parking. We've got a sensitive mix of units. We would have a couple, about 600 units total on the project. And it works out to about you know, works out to about three, about three units, about three units an acre overall with a large amount of, of open space. And actually doesn't, yeah, it works out to a little less than three years. So anyway, that's about three units. So that's, that's where we are, and we wanted to get your input on it before we moved forward and worked with staff to try to bring a full-blown, more detailed plan through the planning commission along with, to the city council.
Bruce, what I'd like to do is maybe have Rob go through his talking points and then open it up for some discussion.
That's perfect, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
So Rob, you want to go ahead?
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate that. This is obviously a very significant project. Some 200 acres on the north side of our community. And in the staff report, you can see the chronology of what we have taken, what's taken place to date as far as the various meetings. And we, obviously, the applicant has provided a significant number of, of documents that relate to the overall design of this project. The chronology, this goes back to July of 2018 where we previously had a joint meeting with the previous council. And then a field trip was held on August 16th in 2018. The thing that I would like to suggest is that there's an awful lot of information here. And to suggest that you can digest it all in one evening might be a bit of a stretch. So my suggestion is to make sure that we take a measured amount of time to measure that not only against the ordinances, but there's some significant information that's in our general plan that actually talks about options and alternatives for this property as well. So back to the, our talking points document. I'm not going to, to read through all of this. That's exhibit D, Lynn. So if you want to call that up. What I did, there were some previous talking points that were identified as part of the initial joint work session, what have you, and what I've done is modified that to reflect some of the activity that's taken place in the meantime, so. I don't know if you can select, there we go. So a very significant part of this is just to recognize that there's a number of steps in this process. The first one obviously is annexation. The second one is to create an identification of what are the zoning standards that we want to apply. Bruce mentioned having a development agreement. Staff supports the idea of having something along those lines. There would be a separate subdivision, and I've said PRUD, but probably some kind of site plan review process that goes along with that. The next thing is the general plan. If you can pull that down just a smidge there, there we go. So the general plan has this designation in the hillside residential area. And the, the references on page 79 for you to be able to refer back to. There's also an environmental chapter that is an important part of this as well. Next is the zoning density options, development agreement, transfer of development rights. So there's opportunities there as we go forward to take a look at this. The, the existing zoning that we currently have in place probably doesn't necessarily fit with what's trying to be identified in this location. So a good possibility is to actually create a zone in conjunction with the development agreement so that we have specific standards for this area. The general plan also talks a lot about the significance of potential clustering to protect the environment. And then the third point is transfer development rights. And whether or not the city is interested in actually identifying this as an area where some potential development rights could be transferred to this property is up for discussion. And then I've given you quite a number of design notes. It's, it stretches over a page and a half. And it talks about the fact that we have an existing north hillside design study that was conducted some years ago. We have some constraints maps. Our city engineer, Lauren Gardner, has put together a memo back in 2018. There's issues with debris basins. Discussion about design with cul-de-sacs, the community park system. Trails, transportation. Let's see. The identification of a possible gated community and the impacts on public safety. So a lot of information there for you to not only digest, but for you to feel comfortable with as, as we go forward. So that's a very quick summation, Mayor. And I'm happy to answer questions or provide additional suggestions. I'm not sure if Lauren's here with us or not, but.
Mr. Mayor, could I, could I address some of those issues that were raised by my friend Rob?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Obviously, we, we understand this is going to be a process. We thought that rather than try to go through all of the details upfront, we sort of wanted to get your touch and feel on the overall plan. Our theory has always been that we would try to do this with all at one time. That would be a, a master development agreement along with the annexation. And probably the creation of a master planned community zone and the application of that zone to the project. Where effectively the development agreement would become the zone, so the council would know exactly what it was getting in the future. And that could include detailed design standards and addressing, of course, all of the issues that Rob has put in here. So our plan would be to give the city council a full-blown package. So as I say, both the developer and the city know what you're going to get. So there's no bait and switch, no no, no confusion whatsoever. And I'm confident that we will be able to work through all of the questions that Rob has raised. They're all justifiable and they're all that I deal with all the time on projects of, of this scope in foothill style developments. And I think that there, it's a good list. We just wanted to get started with more of a, more of hearing what the council and the planning commission had to say, and almost literally a 30,000-foot view rather than trying to deal with the details on this call, because the details as somebody famous once said, but nobody could ever figure out who it was, the devil's in the details. So we know we'll need to work with you on the details with their staff and with the planning commission. So that's where we want to go was the higher level functionality of it.
Thanks, Bruce.
Mayor, do you support that, that approach? Do you, do you want high-level details from us? What thoughts?
Yeah, Brandon, what, maybe how we could do this to keep it somewhat you know, organized? As I think that the issues that I've heard is the, and this is maybe some of the feedback we could discuss in addition to what's on your minds. But I think the density is something that needs to be discussed. I think the commercial aspect is something that needs to be discussed. As you know, we're reviewing the general plan now, updating that. I think we need to consider that. And then just how high up the hill are we, are we willing to go annexing? You know, above the power lines, etc. So what I'd like to do is, is give Bruce some feedback. I would like to call on first, if we could, Councilman Barker, whose assignment is planning, to see if he had. To see if he has comments, the feedback you give to Bruce. And then I'd like to go, if we could, to Chairman Thomas. And then Vice Chairman with Brandon, then call on the council. So if we could go in that order. Ryan, do you have any feedback?
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I suggest that we put the plan back up? That might help so that we all have the plan that we can be looking at. That, that may make it easier, sir. And thank you very much. And, and I'm sorry, I have a 7:15 hard stop, but we'll be, we'll be, we'll be fine.
Right, we'll, we'll try to keep us succinct and get you some feedback to, to consider.
You've always been great, Mr. Mayor. So is your staff.
Councilman Barker, do you want to go ahead? Do you have any comment?
I don't have much right now, like, like it is just a, I, well, a pretty basic plan. We have met with the general plan steering committee and some of the committees that are members I've talked to. They do somewhere in favor of the clustering of the subdivision. I, I'm indifferent. I, I see where it makes sense in this type of situation. I would like to hear what the planning commission has to say. I don't want to speak for them if they're all here. So I think they should let us know what their opinions are of this development.
Yeah, just wanted to give you first chance, Councilman Barker. And once again, I believe if you've read through the documents too, it talks about a regional park. I'm concerned how that would work, but maybe we can work something out with a park at a different spot or et cetera. Councilman Thomas, would you favor us with your comments, please?
Sure. This is Commissioner Thomas, for the record.
Well, I heard you run for council, so I just.
Don't, don't, but don't put that liability on me.
I was going to ask if that was a promotion or a demotion.
It's actually a demotion, but, but Commissioner Thomas, sorry about that.
That's okay. You know, I like the idea of a, a general master plan. You know, being able to take a large, large parcels of ground, which there's very few left in the city, and plan them from a master standpoint. So we know what we're getting and we know, you know, long term what is there. I am not opposed to some type of, you know, there's one spot on here. I think we've talked, it's been brought up about commercial. I don't see anywhere on this particular parcel where I would think that that's a fit. You know, my, my stance always has been any commercial on the hillside would be a postage stamped little piece along mountain road in Washington or somewhere along that that might be able to be a convenience use for residents to help reduce traffic. But that's my opinion on that side of it. As far as with what we have here, the density seems a little bit on the high side for, for my opinion up on the hillside. You know, it's kind of been thought as that we would keep the density, you know. I know when the, the cove was put in and the, and below, it was kind of discussed of doing 20,000 square foot minimum lots the rest of the way up the hillside. And, but I'm also in favor of clustering subdivision as well. So not saying that that's a lot minimum, but you know, to get an overall density. And I don't know in the acreage, that may be how it all works out anyway. Just when you glance at it, it looks like the density might be a little bit high for the feel of, of what we have. But I, but I like the idea of, you know, even some high end townhomes. You know, I'm not opposed to that. My first feel at looking at this plan is that's, if that's all the pink areas, that's probably a little bit much for my feel. And what I understand the residents want, you know, from when we've gone through this. I can't remember if this is the third time or only the second time we've discussed this property up there. But you know, anytime somebody thinks of townhomes up on the hill, the residents have always called me. You know, asking what's going on and I'm very concerned. And so it definitely needs to be done in a thought out and planned way to, as we start to shrink lot size by clustering. You know, what the trade off is and what we're gaining to allow that. But overall, I'm in favor of a whole general master plan, you know, area. Because it, it enables us to, you know, work from the end backwards and, and really plan things out efficiently and, and thoughtfully to hopefully, you know, it's able to maintain that, that, that we're locked in and secure. And it's not one of those general development agreements we have in the city that get readdressed every, every time there's a new section to, to be looked at. So, you know, as we talked, the steering committee would really like to vest the general plan. And, and this would be kind of one of those things by way of development agreement or master plan, that there is some type of vesting for the land, you know, the current landholder now, but also the city for the future.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Mason, let's, let's hear from you.
Okay, my thoughts were almost identical to Commissioner Thomas's, almost point for point. So I'll spare you the redundancy there. So I do agree that it, it seems a little too dense for that area. I'm in agreement with Chairman Thomas on that. I, I, I am okay with commercial development up in there. And I, I like the idea of a corner store. It's, you know, because we're talking three miles away from our downtown district. And, and I think that that would reduce traffic congestion and stuff. You know, they're going to pay a little more for, for the gallon of milk up there or whatever it is. But that's the, the convenience factor. I'm okay with a little, little pocket of commercial. I love clustering. I'm very much in favor of the annexation. I feel like with or without that, this type of development could happen. And annexation gives the city some control that it may not otherwise have. I, when I look at the, and I've analyzed this over the last couple of days. And when I look at the gated community, I think, I feel like there's a little bit better way to do that that makes the development more of an asset to the city. I think Polpach doesn't serve Pleasant View well at all in that it locks the residents out from many access points to that mountain and, and creates, creates a basically a private mountain for the residents of Polpach, where the residents of Pleasant View and, and people of Weber County and everything don't get to access those trail points. So I'd like to see some of the trailheads access just the mountain. And maybe there not even be a trail at this time. But you know, if we have parking lots on the north end of the development for, for, for those purposes. I'm in support of that. Again, I, I feel like it's, it's too dense for that area. I do love actually, and I, I, 180 from where I thought I would be a couple of years ago. But I actually, I think high end condos would be a real nice asset there. I don't think the city in general shares my vision, but I think it could really work. And, and I support it, given that it preserves open space for the rest of the development. So I think the overall density is too much. I also like to hear from the rest of the commission and not just be limited to Eric and I.
I won't be limited to this, you and Eric, but we're going in order. We're going to hear from the council members next. Councilman Swanson. Phil, are you with us? Do you have some?
There we are, there we are. Yeah, I, I echo a lot of what Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Mason have said. The density just overall seems to be quite a bit more than what was presented the last time. I believe the Jan, the July 2018 timeframe. So I'm concerned with that. I understand the reasons to request the clustering. But it seems like the north end is really kind of jammed in with the pink areas. There are, I, I think the possible commercial is probably the development area K that's not labeled to the right with anything. If I remember from July of 2018, that's the area where the little convenience store was thought to be a good location. I'm still against commercial up there. We've made it a point that we would not have commercial up in the bedroom community area of our, of our city. And to this point, we've been able to keep to that. And that's how I'm feeling at the moment. But overall, I think it's, it probably would be very beautiful. I have no doubt about that. It just seems awfully dense for that part of the mountain.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Swanson. Councilwoman Stoker? Do you have any comments?
Not really, just echoing what everybody else has said. And at the risk of being repetitious, I'll just concede to what Phil has said and the other planning commissions Brandon and Eric have said.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Stoker. Councilwoman Severing? Do you have any comments for Bruce? Your, your concerns?
You know, I echo the concerns just with density. I don't think I can add anything more that's already been said. I think it will be, once we've gone through the development process, I think it'll be a beautiful place. But again, I agree with all the previous comments about high density. And I'm a little out, haven't decided yet where I'm feeling okay with anything commercial up in that area. I can see some value in it, but I, I couldn't commit to it tonight. But again, other than just the high density, I, I can't, can't add anything, can't add anything new.
Okay, thank you. Is Councilwoman Extron with us this evening, John?
She's not.
Okay, let's go to other members of the planning commission. Don, let's, let's go with you and then we'll go with Commissioner Nan Carol.
Yeah, I think I'm pretty much in agreement with everything that has been said. There's just a couple of caveats. I'm pretty well okay. In fact, it might be just a really good benefit to have a small commercial neighborhood market with one restriction. They don't sell fuel. It just scares me to death trying to have fuel trucks running up and down that hillside. Other than that, commercial would probably could be a, I mean, it, people don't have to drive around as much. So I can see some real benefits to that. The clustering, I like that. If it preserves a little bit more open space and we put the houses a little closer together. One thing I noticed on the plans is this landlocked a ton of Forest Service area. And I'm only seeing one trail going through to access the various canyons up above it. And I know those don't get a lot of use. There's no dedicated trails. But I also do know they get used and there's people there and I hate to see it landlocked. I would love to see another trailhead. The one over there kind of that goes between the debris basin and the Ben Lomond irrigation reservoir. That was great. But I'd like to see something coming around the other side. I think access to that Forest Service property for those who use it. And honestly, people do things that are not on trails. And so having access to some of the more primitive areas, I think is really important. And there's some amazing stuff up there on the hillsides for the people that are willing to get off of their, out of their cars and out of their ATVs and walk a little bit. So I, I would like to see that opened up. I'd like to see at least one more trailhead up to that area. I think that's a big deal. But overall, I think this could be a, just an amazing development.
Okay, thank you, Don. Commissioner Nan Carol?
Good evening. Yeah, I would agree with, you know, the other planning commissioners and commissioners, I mean, Councilman Swanson as well. But the access to the, the forest area and more trail access, I think is really important. The one thing I do recall of us talking about with that commercial convenience store or whatever it would be, with that public parking lot that people might come to and then access those trails. It would give an opportunity for like a public restroom access. And we'd say, well, if it's not commercial, maybe a little park or something that would be there that had, you know, a restroom facility or something. I do remember we did have a discussion about that. The other things that I, I just had is the, the density I agree with, I think is way too high, particularly high on the mountain with townhomes. And we did love the idea of the clusters, really because it allowed us to leave a lot of the, the trees and natural vegetation that make that mountain so beautiful. And then the other thing is, I know we did have a discussion about the gated community and there was debate. But really, it was just a responsibility question about snow removal and you know, I, I'm not really in favor of a gated community. But if it would, it would be just the portion above the trailhead, above the power lines, I guess I would say. But the fires, you know, the fire response, the snow removal and other city services, that, it, it would be a challenge. That's all my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I think in the documents I read and in my discussion with Dave today, snow removal up above the power poles would be very difficult for the city to accomplish. So I think your point's well taken there. Commissioner Barker?
Can I clarify my, my earlier comments, just so there's clarity? I just, I'm not, I'm not opposed to a gated community. Just the, the manner in which this gated community seems to have, have what Commissioner Wade said, which, which is landlocks the mountain. And so where I don't oppose a gated community at all. I do, don't like the design of this one.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Barker?
I agree with most of, all the comments that were made. I like Don, Don's comments about the trails. I have tried to go up and hike up in those canyons I used to hike and I haven't been able to because all the private lands has probably locked off. And I'm hoping this will open that back up that people want to do that. That's the issue I have. The gated community creates kind of an elitist community and it blocks people off from access that they should be able to have access to. The density bothers me. And I'm not sure it's because of the density or back when I was doing the Barker Park Committee, we talked about development rights with Mayor Taylor was talking about. If they're going to be allowed to have higher density up there, it'd be a trade off that'd help develop the Barker Park. And I don't know if I have the right thing or not, but it seems like we've kind of lost track here. We'll go ahead with the density. We don't have to do any trade offs. And, but I have a hard time with density up that high. And also because of the groundwater, we start adding more homes up there like that. There's going to be more watering taking place, which is going to be more fertilizers, which will percolate into our groundwater eventually. That's about all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Barker. Commissioner Lunt, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't think I'd have much additional. I mean, my biggest, well, beyond what's been said, and I guess it goes along with what's been said, is my biggest issue is that our highest density is the highest spot on the mountain. And so that means the largest buildings basically, because there'll be multifamily in essence, is going to be the highest thing we see. And I, I'm not sure that's what we want as a city. And that's all I've got to add.
Okay, thank you. Lisa, did you have any comments, Lisa, you'd like to make?
I am in agreement with well, Don, in the sense of that I don't think there should be a gas station up there. But I think a convenience mart or whatever it may be would be a good idea. Because especially in the winter time, you can get pretty snowed in and you don't want to drive down that big hill. But yeah, I don't think there's a need for a gas station because you can put your car in neutral and float it down to Maverick if you have to, but it's not that far. But yeah, so not that we've ever done that, right? But I think, and, and as far as the density, I'm a little bit more visual. So I, I'm trying to visualize like how, you know, how tall would this be? And how much space would there be around it or whatever? So I don't have a huge opinion on that at the moment. But yeah, you probably don't want, you know, too many condensed buildings on the mountainside. So, and, and especially if I'm not earth toned or something, that would be a little more. But no, I, I, that's about it for me.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Staff, Lauren or Rob, do you have any further feedback for Bruce to consider?
And then I can give you some, Mr. Mayor, after that, I can give you some responses to these that were very, very helpful. I appreciate the input.
Okay. And I know you've got the 7:15.
No, you're great. Thank you, Mayor.
Lauren, did you have anything you wanted to add to get feedback? Okay?
Yes, I do. I'm going to speak mainly about the environmental, the engineering issues related to this, this piece of ground. We have several areas that are traversed from the earthquake fault lines. We have potential for debris flows coming out of several of the canyons that affect this property. We have quite a bit of elevation differences. We have quite a bit of elevation differences which affect water pressure zones. And I got some input from our water department that the tank that's proposed and the elevations that we have here, it's going to be very difficult to properly serve this property. I have concerns about the water tank being right in the floodway of this big debris flow that comes down this channel. Let's see, we're going to end up requiring all kinds of studies be done on this related to the debris flows, the earthquake faults, the potential for avalanches in this area. Of course, geotechnical and other related issues will have to be complied with. Other than that, I think the other comments from the commissioners and council have been on point. And I did speak with Public Works about snow plowing. We want to make sure that our ride of ways are sufficiently wide and provide areas to store that snow because there is a lot more snow up here than the rest of the city. And they had concerns about being able to get up to this water tank during the winter. They have to visit our reservoir sites. He mentioned, I think, three times a week to check on those. And the snow levels will be very challenging in this area. So I think that's about all I have at this point.
Thanks, Lauren. Rob, did you have anything else before we have Bruce respond?
Yeah, Mayor, just let me give you, density's been talked quite a bit about here. Let me just throw out a couple of numbers, not to to do anything more than just give some ranges here. If we were to look at an HP2 zone, which is the the property that's just immediately to the south, that density for that area is about what the zoning ordinance allows is about three and a half units per acre. This overall net density, it's varied depending on which plan we've been shown. A little bit over that, 3.7 units per acre. So I'm not so sure that the overall number is as much a concern as making sure that the individual units are placed correctly based on the constraints that Lauren was talking about. Also, I think that there's some potential for taking a look at what some of the strategies that are in the general plan for being able to address providing services up here could be looked at. And I think with that, I really appreciate taking some pretty good notes here as far as what the concerns are from both bodies. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, Bruce, let's give you some time.
I'll be brief, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with Rob. I took some very good notes. That was the reason we wanted to have this discussion. And what we will bring you back is a much is a is a plan that provides you with a lot more detailed information. We just want to make sure we weren't going completely the wrong way before we spent the time and the money to get you where we were. We will work specifically on the trail issue. I understand now that's a more important issue than I thought it might be. In terms of the gated area, we specifically put the gates there so that there wouldn't be a burden on the general taxpayers of the city for maintaining and operating the upper rows because of the snow issues. So that was the reason we did it there. We can obviously reconsider some aspects of that. We do think the density will, when we show the next version, we will explain more. So you don't just see fields of pink and yellow and lighter pink and peach and whatever all those colors are. We will provide you which with more detail as to how they lay out. Some issues, for example, the the higher density on some of the upper stuff. Reason for that is those are perfect places to put some amazing, high quality townhomes because of the views in the topo. And the topo will help to conceal the heights of the units actually as they will be into the mountain. So we're sensitive to that and we will, again, bring that bring you some new plans on that. We, of course, know that we have to deal with all of the engineering issues. I've usually spent hundreds of thousands of dollars dealing with geology, geotech, fire, earthquake, et cetera, et cetera. And I can guarantee, Lauren, that every single time I ever work on a plan, even though I'm just a poor humble lawyer, one of the first questions I always ask is where the hell is the snow storage? And we, I promise you, we've already discussed snow storage and we will make plans for that. We will deal with the access and we'll deal, obviously, with the water location and work on those details because we have to make the engineering happy. So we'll work on a second level of these things. As it relates to the commercial, it is in development area K. But I want to be clear on that. We put that in there solely for the discussion of the council. We don't care whether it's commercial or not. We understand that there's a sort of a argument among friends about whether it's commercial or not. Literally, you tell us whether you want commercial there or not, and we will put it there or not. And we will put it there with or without gas. I don't think it's an appropriate, personally, I don't think it's an appropriate spot for a gas station either. But we, it's a, it's a logical location to have it to to save people from driving all the way down. But if you don't want it there, then it ain't going to be there. We will live with whatever you want in that location. And if we don't do it that way, we'll just expand development area H a little bit and put a few more units up there, which will be high value units because they'll back against the empty power corridor and people will have private backyards and gorgeous views. So we don't really, we're not worried about that. We'll, we'll just continue to leave it that way until you tell us what to do. So we will, the only disadvantage of looking at it at this level before we got there is we weren't able to show the plan for clustering in open space. At our next iteration, we will show you some concepts for clustering and open space preservation. And we really, really appreciate all of your attention and the thought you've given us. If you've got any more ideas, we're, we're willing to look at them and we'll move forward with that as as fast as we reasonably can.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. And once again, just to my comments and obviously, this is a council decision. I'm concerned about the density as expressed. I do not favor commercial in the area. We talk about having to drive three miles downhill. On that criteria, I need one up here. I'm a little over two miles and I'm uphill against the mountain here on the east side of the city. So once again, I I think additional thought has to be given to that in regards to commercial. And then I'd like to know more about the the parks. If I look at the general plan, it actually talks about almost like a mega regional park there. I don't think that's going to work on on the hill up there to have that the type of park. So I think we may need to have some discussions on where to, where is the park going to be as part of the overall consideration of the of the city's well being? Then I just want to make sure, and I'm not talking about pipes in the ground. I want to have a discussion ultimately about the other infrastructure that's going to take with that size of a community. So just a little feedback from myself, Bruce.
No, I appreciate this, Mayor. And I would point out that this project will generate a ton of your park impact fees. So which will help for regional parks down the hill. But obviously, that is an issue. We agree with you that there's not any spot up here to have soccer fields, for example. Would, if you kick a soccer ball from the top of development area S, it's quite likely to end up in the bottom of development area B. So a soccer soccer field, you know, maybe a pickleball court or something here and there. But this is not, this land is not suited for a regional park and we know that. So we'll work with the city on how to how to deal with that. And obviously, you're correct. We, we have to deal with all of the infrastructure.
So.
Thank you very much.
Before you go, I just want to make sure, Brandon, you unmuted, did you have an additional comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that, you know, a park isn't necessarily soccer. It isn't, it is, people recreate many different ways. And I'd like this to be open to to still having a park here. And if, as my background is demonstrating, we recently, you know, the more access we put and the more people we put closer to the mountain, the increased chance of fire, right? And fires are going to happen naturally anyway. And I'd like there to be some open space for the fighting of those fires and stuff as well, right? And 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 a park, even if it's, you know, a couple acres of of a nature space is, I think, an ideal spot. And I think, I don't know the ins and outs of this week's event, but it seemed to me that having the equestrian park there was a was a was a real asset to fighting that. And I'd just like to be open to some different kinds of parks, not just soccer.
Absolutely. I wasn't, I wasn't implying that the only kind of soccer, but usually when you say a regional park in most cities, regional park connotes splash pads, you know, soccer fields, baseball fields, et cetera. But obviously, we we will, on the next iteration, we will show you some areas of defended place, some areas of open space that can be amenitized and made for parks along with the clustering and development. We'll, we'll certainly show that.
Then what, just one other thing, I think ultimately we will have a discussion on is just really how far up that hill do we want to annex in? Because I think Brandon's point about, you know, fires, et cetera, and going up above the power lines, I think that's ultimately going to have to be discussed at some point, too. So that's our feedback, Bruce. I know you've got a hard stop and we're about there.
Well, this is exactly what I had hoped for, Mr. Mayor, when we asked to schedule this meeting, when we talked about it several months ago. I guess we can call it BC before Corona.
Yeah, there's a, we need to get the back to AD.
Or at least AC. I'll take AC.
I'm talking after disease.
Oh, okay, very good. I was talking after Corona, but I like after disease or maybe after plague or pandemic, AP.
Anything else?
No, I appreciate that was very helpful and we will get back, we will meet with your staff in the near future to discuss timelines and processes for submitting new plans and where's the best way to to go to get feedback from from all of these, to incorporate our feedback into the next level of the plans.
Okay, Chairman Thomas, did you, do you have anything else from your commissioners? Either commissioners?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Bruce. Enjoy your evening. Be safe.
Sir, thank you. Bye.
Chairman Thomas, we'll we'll turn the meeting back to you for a regular planning commission. Thank you for letting us participate with the planning commission tonight. I'm sure we'll have many other discussions.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, council, for joining us. And at this time, we'll go ahead and adjourn our joint work session and begin our regular meeting and excuse any of those that were, would like to leave the meeting at this time.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead with the regular meeting. Item number three, roll call, I believe every, all the commissioners are here and present tonight. Item number four, meeting minutes, consideration, consideration action to approve the July 1st, 2020 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Is there any correction or discussion for the minutes?
No, I read those, through those and I, I moved that we approved those minutes.
Yeah, a second. Okay, we got a motion, a second for to approve the July 1st, 2020 minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our opening meeting statement. Item number five, Rob, is that you tonight or?
Yes, it is. Thank you. I'm going to explain the process the planning commission will use in making decisions and the rules that govern the agenda items or hearings. The planning commission is interested in receiving public input and treating everyone fairly, both interested parties and applicants. The planning commission is governed by Utah state law and the North Ogden City zoning and subdivision regulations. These codes contain criteria that the planning commission must follow in making its decisions. Before each agenda item begins, city staff will give a report. The report will identify whether the item is an administrative or legislative item and list the criteria that govern the city's decision. After the staff report, the applicant will speak first. Following the applicant, audience participants will be recognized by the chair to make comments or ask questions. In order to have comments, the, in this electronic meeting, the as part of the, I believe it's the chat feature, you raise your hand and then you would be recognized to be able to speak. Applicants or their agents will be allowed up 10 minutes for their initial presentation, five minutes for rebuttal time. Person speaking for a committee or board will be given five minutes. All other individuals will be entitled to three minutes. Any information, argument or evidence you give must relate to the criteria listed in the staff report or other criteria in the general plan or land use regulations that you believe apply to the decision. Any materials that are displayed or referenced, for example, pictures or written materials, are part of the record and must be sent to the commission. The planning commission has adopted rules regarding outside contacts, otherwise known as ex parte communications. Commissioners are not to engage in communications outside of the public meeting regarding administrative applications. If you desire to speak to commissioners on these matters, it should be done at a regular meeting so your comments, concerns and evidence are on the public record. And finally, if you happen to be on, unless you're speaking, we request that you mute your speaker. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We will now, is there any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest within members of the commission tonight on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I am excited to have my first conflict of interest ever. And so item number nine is regarding the approval of Pheasant Landing. And a number of weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, my wife and I were driving by there and and she saw that development and asked me to call the developer, the the real estate agent there, and I, and I did. And and we're very interested in purchasing one of those lots for something down the road. I don't own it yet, but I have expressed interest in buying it. And so I'm going to recuse myself from item number nine. It wouldn't have necessarily affect Pheasant Hill, but it would affect Pheasant, Pheasant's landing. So I'll just mute myself and silence my microphone and listen to the conversation when it comes to item number nine. I won't be voting or having any input.
Okay.
I have had input on that subdivision prior and all that was before I had ever any intent of of owning any other real estate than the than the one I'm sitting in right now. And so, you know, I'd say that those were still, you know, those were, those were valid. And, you know, thoughtful comments that I gave, my best judgment, too.
Okay, thanks for disclosing that, Brandon. Any other? All right, if not, item number seven, public comments for items that are not on the agenda at this time. Any members of the public would like to make a comment on something to the planning commission that is not on the agenda, then please ask that you raise your hand or send out a chat and we'll unmute you and we'd love to hear from you at this time.
Eric, I don't see any hands or any chat.
Okay. Well, let's move on to our administrative items. Item number eight, subdivision ordinance 2019-8, consideration and action regarding final approval of the Northwood Hills Phase Two subdivision, 29 lots located approximately 2550 north, 1125 east. Brandon Bell.
Good evening, Chair Thomas and members of the commission. I'm just gonna, I'll be delivering the staff report for Northwood Hills Phase Two. Before I get started, Lynn, if you could pull up exhibit B, which is the preliminary plat, we'll just have that to look at. Give us some reference on some of the comments that I'll make. That's, so. Uh, that's, so, within the last few months, I think it was back in March or April, Phase One of Northwood Hills, uh, received final approval, and that's uh, been recorded recently. This is, uh, subdivision that's, um, to the east or to the north of Oaklawn Park and, uh, and to the east of Barker Park. Uh, it's, the, the phase that's being considered tonight is about 13 acres. Uh, the zoning on this property is, uh, the R110 zone. Um, it's mostly surrounded by either, uh, well, it's either residential or, uh, open space. And then, since this is our first administrative item, I'll go ahead and read the decision statement for administrative items. Uh, when the planning commission is acting as a land use authority, it is acting in an administrative capacity and has a limited degree of discretion. Examples of administrative applications are conditional use permits, design reviews, and subdivisions. Administrative applications must be approved by the planning commission if the application demonstrates compliance with the approval criteria. The number of lots in this subdivision is 29. I don't recall if I mentioned that earlier. The minimum lot size for this zone, the R110 zone is 10,000 square feet. Uh, and for most lots, and then on corner lots, that changes to 11,000 square feet. There's also a frontage requirement of 90 feet, uh, lot width, uh, at the 30 foot setback. The lot widths and the square footage of the lots have been verified to meet those requirements for the R110 zone. Um, the city engineer submitted a report that was dated July 1st of this year. And the, um, there have been a number of negotiations with the council regarding, uh, both sewer and stormwater detention. Um, and agreements are in place with the city council, both for, uh, the sewer, um, going across city property to the west and, uh, the stormwater detention, um, being provided by, uh, an Oaklawn Basin. The, there has been a geotechnical report that covers the entirety of the subdivision. Uh, however, um, on some related items, the, uh, will serve letters for sewer, uh, and secondary water. Um, those, the letters that we received previously applied to the first phase of the subdivision, uh, but not the second. Uh, they weren't clear as to whether they covered the second, and so, the staff were recommending that we need to receive, uh, will serve letters for the second phase specifically, uh, noted in those letters, um, for this subdivision of both, uh, sewer and stormwater. Uh, since the time that this report was written, um, we have received, uh, will serve letter for secondary water is my understanding. And then, um, there is one issue regarding block lengths that we wanted to bring to your attention. We think that it's covered in the ordinance, but we wanted to make you aware of it. Um, our typical block length is, uh, maximum is 1,320 feet. Um, there is a block that this subdivision would create on the south side of the subdivision that would be, uh, the meeting, the very rough measurement that I was able to get on it was 1,380 feet. I don't think there's any way that it's under 1,320 feet. But this, this sort of issue is addressed in city code, um, in, under, uh, 12 dash 6 dash 3, um, regarding arrangement of streets. It states, um, streets shall be related appropriately to the topography, uh, in provision A. It also states that grades of street shall conform as closely as possible to the original topography. Um, further down, it states that, um, such integration meaning of the street shall take topographical consider, uh, conditions into consideration. Uh, minor streets shall be laid out to conform as much as possible to the topography to discourage use by through traffic. Staffs of the opinion that there's a, there's a, um, a ravine to the south of this that between this and Oaklawn Park, um, between this proposed development and, and, uh, Oaklawn Park. And staff is of the opinion that the ravine is sufficient enough of a landscape feature and topographical feature that it justifies the southern street in the subdivision being exempt from the block length standard based on the above sections, uh, from city code. Um, I took the time late last week to go out and visit, uh, that ravine. Um, it, it is sort of a public, it's a public open space and, and so you can go down in there, there's some trails and there were some kids using it for mountain biking and stuff. Just an estimate, it's, it's probably at least 50 feet wide and the, the, I don't know exactly what the, um, the drop in topography is, but it's, um, probably at least 20 feet, uh, in certain areas. Um, and, and then that ravine's 50 to 70 feet wide in, in some areas, maybe wider. Um, and so given that, those details of, of that landscape feature, staff is of the opinion that, um, it, justifies this exemption from the, uh, block length standard. The...
So Brandon, are you saying the, the, the lot, the, the block will be the whole length of the blue and yellow lines you're showing?
Um, just one second.
When it's all said and done?
Um, yeah, I didn't...
Meaning that the block will just be on that south side, right? And there'll be bisecting roads coming from the north to it.
Can you actually pull up the, the proposed plat, Lynn?
Uh huh.
To me, that's a, there, there is a difference between one half of the block being that long and the entire block being that long. Right? Meaning if there's houses on both sides and, and that goes, you know?
Yeah, so this is, um, this is towards the eastern portion of that. This, this does not cover the entire area that was just shown on that aerial photography. Uh, the, the street that I'm referring to, um, let's see, I need to...
2450, right?
Yeah, it's 2450. I just wanted to draw on it, um, if I can. But anyway, if you follow 2450, uh, it's, it's the length of that street down to the bottom in Phase One that's 1,380 feet. This section shown here is not 1,380 feet. That, that's an approximate measurement. Um, but, but the, when you put this with, together with Phase One, which has already been approved, it will put the length at 1,380 feet approximately. That's, that's a, you know, I, that was using, um, one of the, our drafting programs that I pulled that number through a straight line. So I don't know exactly what it is, but I know it'd come out to greater than 1,320.
But, so you're, you're saying, you're saying from 1125 east going west is 1,380 feet?
No.
No. I'm starting at Lot 209. Um, it, you, this is the middle of a block that will be created if approved, that would be longer than 1,380 feet. Um, it's joining...
You have two streets going north in the middle of that.
Right, but I'm not, but they don't go through past 2450. Uh, they, the, the point is, is that, that, you know, the block length...
I see what you're saying, the south side of that.
Yes, yes.
Well, unless we want to put a, a street through the city park, I think we're, we're okay, right?
Well, I mean, that's...
Not a park.
So, there is, there's an accessway, I believe, that would go down to the west. But, you know, you have two sections of city ordinance and I'm just bringing them to your attention. Um, so the block length standard does exist, but also we have this, these sections of city code that, um, state that, you know, topography should be a significant, uh, factor. So that's why I bring it to your attention to let you...
It does back the question if, um, and I, I'm, I know we're not at the discussion phase, I always do this, but I, I'm not in favor of having a, of a city street bisect those, but it does back the question to the, um, planning commission. Should there be a pedestrian path there that would, that would...
Sorry, there was some background noise.
And I, I'm using, uh, a few weeks ago when Pheasant Landing was discussed as a, as an example here. So, um, uh, should there be pedestrian access to the park? Now, it doesn't, it's not the same as, as Pheasant Landing because there, there is a park back there. So if, if you're, we don't want to, if we don't want to see a 1,380 foot long, um, row of homes, which I'm not necessarily opposed to, should, should it be bisected by a pedestrian access to the park instead of a row?
Brandon, there is a trail planned to go through for Barker Park across there into Oaklawn Park, so we'll be bisected.
That's true. There is to the west. At the west end is part of Phase One. There was a, there's a pedestrian connection that was required as part of Phase One.
It's correct.
So a second pedestrian access, a couple hundred feet to the east seems silly. Is that, are we of that opinion?
That would be a decision for the commission.
Okay.
I don't want to call you silly, silly, Brandon, but...
I'm, I'm not sold on the idea either. I'm just asking the question to the, to the planning commission if, if we're strong, we feel strong that it, you know, that we can't have a row of houses 1,500 feet long.
Well, I, I guess from my standpoint, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm viewing the block length differently, is I don't feel like you need to have a four-way intersection to determine a block length. I feel like if you've got streets on the other side, you know, the idea is circulation and traffic. You know, that you're not creating these long streets without any exits or vehicles in that. You've got all these streets going to the north. So in my opinion, I don't see that as a block length. I look at a block length as, you know, intersection to intersection.
I agree with Eric.
I agree, but the, the code could be written and, and this is an administrative action, right? So we're, our job is to say, does it fit the code and, and, uh, you know?
That's how I interpret the code.
Okay.
I don't know, I, that's, I don't know what the def, that's why I say the definition of that. So, if it's, if it's the other way, then, you know, that's, but in, in, in the, in, in any instance in this, being what's on the other property on the other side, it doesn't allow us a through street. Uh, uh, you know, this is acceptable anyway.
So, um, I guess I'll wrap up a few final comments and then, uh, if there's further discussion. The general plan calls to this, for this property to be developed as low-density residential. Uh, the recommended conditions of our approval include the requirements of the North Ogden City Engineers Report, um, the requirements of the TRC meeting letter. Um, will serve letters be provided, uh, from both Central Weber Sewer and Secondary Water specifically for this phase of the subdivision, um, and that they specifically reference, uh, Northwood Hills, uh, Phase Two. And then a final one that I haven't discussed in this, uh, that, that gets to be an issue for staff when we are doing building permits, is that there's currently, uh, building envelopes that are shown on the plat. Um, those, staff recommends that those need to be removed so as not to bind the city to the setbacks that the building envelopes currently identify on the plat. Should the ordinance regarding setbacks change? Um, as a little bit background on that, we've had, we had our administrative hearing officer at one point rule that, um, the, we had to interpret the, the setbacks as, at a certain distance, different than what staff stated they were based on the language in our definitions because a building envelope was shown on the plat. And it, it allowed a building to be set back about 10 feet farther than other would, otherwise would have. So it gets the city in a position where we can be bound to something that we didn't actually, you know, set ourselves, um, that, but that was provided by the applicant, their interpretation of the setbacks. So, um, staff's recommend is that, recommendation is that it be required that those building envelopes, uh, be, removed from the plat as a condition of approval. And staff recommends final approval of the subdivision, uh, subject to the, uh, uh, just listed recommended conditions of approval. Uh, are there any further questions for myself that the commission has?
So on that, Brandon, on the building envelope, I guess my only concern about that is, you know, we have our setbacks which, which create that. You're, what you're saying is if they draw the building envelope to meet our current setbacks, then that's, that's what they're vested at. You know, and so if somebody doesn't build a lot, build on the lot for 10 years and at that which time our setbacks are different, then they'll be subject to, they're still bound by the, if the building envelope is in there, it's today's setbacks. If they're not, it's current setbacks at that time.
Correct. We're, we'd essentially, the, if that condition's not in there and the building envelopes continue to be shown on the plat, we're essentially giving partial approval for a building permit. And that's not the purpose of subdivision approval. Standards do change based on feedback from residents, and so it allows the city to have the appropriate flexibility to not be, uh, approving setbacks at this point in time to have those removed.
But aren't the setbacks determined in our zone, the zone ordinance?
Well, they, they are, but the point is, is if the zoning ordinance changes, which it has, if you recall, um, it changed for Quell Ponds and, and a couple of other subdivisions and zones.
Yeah.
Then we're stuck with the, we're stuck with the existing, um, ones that are shown on the plat possibly. So it...
Okay. I guess from, just from the other side of it, I look at and say, well, if we require a, you know, I, I realize we made exceptions at Mason Cove and Quell Pond for some existing topography. Um, but looking at it, say, let's say you have 20 homes built in there and they're all set back 30 feet. And then some commissioner or council in the future goes in and says, oh, let's just change the R, R110 or R18, whatever the zone is on this subdivision to a 20-foot setback. And so then you're having your last 10 houses in a subdivision, you know, being sporadic, spread throughout there, able to go 10 feet closer to the street. So looking at it from the opposite side of it, I would rather kind of lock it in so it's all uniform, you know, always in that instance. So, I mean, I see both sides of it. So I, I guess I don't know, you know, how we, if that matters, that we want to worry about that, or I don't think we have building envelopes normally on lots on our plats anyway. Is that correct?
We, we have had them, uh, in the past and that's, we're trying to get away from them because we, because it's not building permit approval. Um, and yet this is essentially, setbacks are typically dealt with at the, at the, uh, building permit stage. And we've had problems with them being on there in the past, and so that's where our recommendation is coming from.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Brandon? All right, uh, before I guess we begin our discussion, is the applicant with us, would they like to present anything?
We have, uh, Parker McGarvey here. Yes, he's got his hand. Go ahead, Parker.
Awesome. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. I, uh, just wanted to take a quick moment just to thank the, the staff. They've been um, awesome and very supportive and helpful, um, as we've gone through Phase Two. As you may have seen, we've just have flown through construction of Phase One. Um, and nearly wrapping up the improvements there and looking to get this approval from you so we can just roll into construction of the second phase and, uh, and keep going with this, this, uh, fantastic development. But yeah, I just, again, wanted to express my, uh, gratitude to the staff and, and for their help.
Okay, Parker, as, as typically we do, the final approvals are subject to the committing to the TRC letter, um, from the engineer and the staff report. Is there anything in that which you would, you object to or?
Um, no, uh, we've really have met, um, all the last little odds and ends, and we've, I was able to send over both, uh, the sewer and the irrigation. Um, will serve letters. We've addressed all the red lines except, um, that setback, the setbacks that are shown on the plat. Um, so yeah, we're, we're ready to go. Ready to accept everything.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, is there any questions anyone has for the applicant? All right, thanks, Parker. I guess what, Commissioners will...
Let me ask the applicant one question.
Oh.
Um, so given that, given that, uh, we're being asked to extend the block length further than, than necessary, and, and given that it, there is a, a park behind it, you feel that this, uh, this gives sufficient access and, and movability to the residents of that area? I'm sure you're going to say yes, but I want to hear from you.
Yes, um, especially with that trail that's extended in, uh, Phase One. Um, as far as the block length, I mean, it's only a, a distance of, I believe, what, eight, eight or nine homes. Um, that's on that block length. Um, which isn't, at least within our, our portion of the development, uh, to get to that trail to then access, uh, to access that park.
So would you live on a street that has that many homes on it, on the one side?
Um, I, I would, and I would agree with, um, Um, I I would, and I would agree with um, I believe it's Commissioner Thomas. Um, where there's several of these north-south roads. Um, that really, I feel, breaks up the block length quite a bit. Um, again, you know, that they're not full intersections, they're T-intersections. But that uh, that provides enough of uh, a breakup in that block length, I would think.
You know, I actually agree. I agree with you. I think it's, I think it's an acceptable um, thing for us to approve, just for this is for the commission. I I personally don't love the the extra provisions that we have to put on corner lots and uh, and I feel like just making another corner lot here would be unnecessary and really dumb. I I'm I'm okay with this. I mean visually, you'd almost like to see it broke up in some way, but it looks like the road does have a little bit of a bow to it. So it's not like you're looking down at a straight line of fifteen hundred feet of homes. I I don't think, I think you're uh,
Yeah.
I think it'll break it up a little there visually because of the bow and the rub. This is kind of the bottom of that, and then it kind of goes back up. So I'm I'm okay with with what's being proposed.
Okay, thank you, Parker.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other discussion?
We'll make a motion that we grant final approval of the Northwood Hills subdivision Phase Two, subject to the recommended conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
Will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Uh, question, are you going to include the building envelope be removed?
That is actually one of the conditions of approval.
Okay, sorry.
It is.
No.
This is a technical review.
Sorry, I was muted there for a second. Okay, uh, Commissioner Arner.
Yes.
Commissioner Lunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Barker.
Yes.
Commissioner Nancaro.
Yes.
Commissioner Waite.
Yes.
Commissioner Mason.
Yes.
When I vote yes. So that final approval, oh.
I do.
Now you don't ask questions after we vote.
No, 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 this isn't a question. It's a comment on the technical review committee report. It's listed as TRC notes White Rock subdivision rather than this one.
Oh, we have just the wrong.
That's a correction. Yeah, that's a correction. They boiler plated, the staff boiler plated this one and uh, needs to just change the header. Has nothing to do with its subdivision. It's just the report.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's move on to our next item.
Remind the commission that I'm going to be muting and stopping my video. I'm just an audience.
Okay. Uh, next item is administrative item number nine, consideration and action regarding final approval of Pheasant Landing subdivision nineteen lots and Pheasant Field First Amendment, one lot located approximately one seventy-five east Alberta Drive. Rob?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission and audience. As you can see that through the header, that the the issue of the property on the northeast corner has been addressed by adding a an amendment. So we'll be talking about that here in just a minute. So this particular uh, project, nineteen lots and then Pheasant Landing First Amendment is one lot for a total of twenty lots. Uh, the uh, property uh, as identified and as correctly uh, noted noticed by Commissioner Waite, uh, we have uh, made sure that we are calling this agricultural land tonight. Just letting you know that we listen to you commissioners.
I I had noticed that. Thank you.
Um, the the project, of course, is in the R one twelve point five zone. Uh, minimum is our twelve thousand five hundred square feet area for interior lots thirteen five thousand, thirteen thousand five hundred square feet for corner lots. And uh, the the frontage requirement, as I recall, is a hundred feet. So the uh, uh, have the last planning commission meeting, there was a fair amount of discussion on this particular project as there were a number of options presented to you. Uh, we have a a technical review from April ninth, a revised uh, city engineer report from July sixth. Uh, we've been given a will serve letters from secondary water and the geotechnical report. They've also been submitted. So as you recall, that as a part of this discussion, there was a requirement made to add a pedestrian access. Uh, and as a part of option two. Then the applicant has actually presented two final plats. Exhibit B one has the pedestrian way trail connection. V two is without that trail connection. I suspect the applicant will wanted to address that. The planning commission's June uh, third approval requires pedestrian and and trail connection. The uh, the connection is ten feet wide. The walkway would be six feet wide, a concrete walkway with gravel on subgrade surface on the outer two feet. It would be up to the developer if he decides he wants to construct a fence of if one is desired. Or it would be left up to the future uh, property owners if they desired to have a fence. Terms of the lot design, um, a verification, a verification has been submitted for lot widths at the thirty-foot setback line. And the bearings of all proposed property lines have also been submitted. I mentioned a little bit about the Lundstrom property. That's the one that has this amendment. And so it has its own separate plat for that lot as part of the adjustment for that parcel along to incorporate a small sliver into, I've forgotten the lot number, but the lot on the uh, one of those lots up there on the northeast corner. In terms of submittals, uh, Central Weber Sewer has provided a well-served letter. Uh, we also identified a note, a divine, identifying the study uh, from the geotechnical report. We've got a condition there to include that on the plat so that people can reference that. That's, that's sort of an interesting uh, requirement because we get calls for those kinds of things on a regular basis. So in the future, I think that'll be a real help to anybody looking at purchasing a lot. Uh, there were, there was a previous traffic study done, and we've uh, referenced that previously. And there's also on the east side, a six-foot sidewalk. And that would fulfill the requirement for the trail connection on the general and uh, as part of the general plan. So summary, as does the proposed subdivision meet the requirements of the applicable city subdivision and zoning ordinances? Is the proposed subdivision consistent with the general plan? Uh, this uh, staff believes that it is in compliance with the general plan. Uh, it's in the Old Town neighborhood and uh, is identified as low density. We've uh, given you a list of the uh, conditions of approval. I won't read through those unless you have questions about them. Staff recommendation is that the planning commission grant final approval of the Pheasant Landing subdivision and Pheasant Landing First Amendment subdivision, subject to the conditions and recommendations in this staff report, including the pedestrian way and exhibit B one, the engineers' report and the technical review committee letter. With that, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Rob. Is there any questions for Rob tonight? If not, uh, we'll invite the applicant to address the planning commission.
John, John, would you like to say something?
Yes.
Uh, that's that, that's not a question, Lynn.
I smiled when I said that.
First of all, I would like to for uh, right on this project, and it's, it hasn't been an easy one, uh, even though it's quite small. Uh, the only question I have, and I talked to John Call about your minutes that Mr. Barker made, recommended that trail to go through there. Uh, I was just a little confused whether that was a requirement or recommendation, or if a, if a recommendation is a requirement. But regardless, as we've analyzed this uh, a small little trail going through there, there are some concerns that we have as the developers. Number one, it doesn't go anywhere, whereas in North Oaks, you know, it went to a park. I provided some pictures. There are two other trails in all of North Ogden that go through residents. One goes to Bates Elementary and the other goes to Green Acres Elementary. I also took a minute to go, this picture here is the entrance that goes to Weber High. Uh, that is unpleasant view there, and as you can see, it's turned out to be a real problem. Uh, you know, I didn't develop that subdivision, but I can see the thoughts behind it. Let's let's access the neighbor, you know, the children to the high school. But it hasn't turned out quite like that. There's been some uh, problems within there with the hot, the high school kids going in there and smoking and whatever else high school kids do. So as I've analyzed this, uh, I don't know why the city would want to maintain two foot of gravel on each side. All that'll do is grow weeds. Uh, but it would be city property according to John Call. You have snow removal, maintenance of this little trail that goes nowhere. Uh, in my CPNRs, hoping I'm out of time, I have no fencing beyond the front of the house. I wanted to give it an open look as a neighborhood. And this would require a fence to go out to the sidewalk, as you can see in the picture. Uh, the other thing I had, I talked about security. I don't think, well, unless you really had to, that wouldn't be a choice lot to have people be able to access your backyard and look in and see what you're doing. And that's why these people planted all those trees to try to shield them from the kids and that walking through. And I think security for a person who has their home, they want to feel safe. A safe haven, they want to go there, and they don't want to worry about who's that walking by our bedroom window? I think that's frightening. I think those are the comments that I have. The thirteen hundred foot uh, trail, a six-foot trail that goes from Lowman View to Alberta, gosh, that's a lot. That's a lot of concrete and a lot of space. Enough for two uh, strollers to go up the road. And uh, I just, I just can't in my own mind understand why we'd want to put a trail that goes nowhere. Uh, there's no school over there. I mean, if there was some reason, I wouldn't even bring it up as a a an objection. So that, that's my uh, my analysis of it. And I, anyway, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? I can't see if you're talking or not, but if not, uh, let's roll into our discussion item. As far as the, I uh, I gotta state that I was not in attendance at the meeting when this was at preliminary approval. So some of the things, I apologize if I mention uh, that have been discussed. But as uh, Mr. Hanson talked about tonight, with the trail going in between the blocks, I, you know, when we did that previous subdivision, you know, this has come up before in previous ones. I think commissioners, you, I'm not, I think you know that I'm not a fan of putting walkways between houses. I'm okay with it if if like what was discussed tonight, if we have a trail that's going between the homes in the inner and a block that's uh, going to a park or a school or something like that, but simply just to connect one city street to another city street between, you know, essentially four people's homes, the two people in this subdivision, and what would be probably the two lots in the next subdivision to the west, as it ever, if it ever develops. Um, it's just, I I don't, I don't like the idea of of, you know, giving that access to, you know, to the public, to people's backyards and and to all those things. I don't see that it serves that it serves a purpose, you know, for, for what few, you know, this whole subdivision has. Uh, I can't remember, nineteen lots. And then the subdivision to the west, whatever it develops. So essentially, you're creating a pro- public walkway between two blocks for, you know, I would dare say maybe six homes on either side. Once you go beyond that, it's quicker to walk around the, you know, the end of the block anyway. So um, you know, for that reason, I I would look at this and say, not make it a requirement um, myself, uh, just because of that. I, like I said, I don't, I don't like the idea of if the trail goes somewhere, connects to another trail that's at the back of their property or a park or things, I'm in favor, but. So, sorry, I missed the discussion when that came up. I I didn't, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on that or uh, your opinions. I'd like to hear that. That's been, that's really my only item I I look at on this uh, subdivision as it came in tonight.
I've had a change. I I have to agree with you, Eric. I see no need for that trail to there. It does to create a problem. I'm willing to go along with a change.
I think when we talked about it before, I I had expressed my concern with a dead end, you know, small strip of land that does nothing other than provide maybe a space for kids to hang out or something, or who knows what it'd be used for other than nothing and overgrow with weeds unless it's maintained. So I have no problem not having it there.
Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, I don't really have uh, much of a, an opinion on it. It it'll be a pain to the adjacent property owners. The city won't maintain it. Uh, it might be nice when the second street gets put through, whether that's a year or ten years or twenty years from now, but in the meantime, it grows weeds and it's a maintenance nightmare. The city will not maintain it. So, yeah, I'm okay either way.
Is there any other discussion on the, as far as the rest of the subdivision? I I failed to mention to, aside from this, obviously, which Johnny addressed to us. If he's okay, Johnny, if you'd pipe in, are you okay with committing to the other requirements of the staff report and the TRC?
Go ahead, John.
Yes, I think staff has done a good job and Lauren, and uh, I really think this will be a beautiful neighborhood that North Ogden will be proud of for years to come. And so thank you and uh, appreciate the city council's helping. We're going to reroute. I don't know if the planning commission knew it. We're going to reroute all of the stormwater and all of the sewer uh, into one sixty east, and I think that's good for the subdivision, and I think it's great for the city. And uh, the the rest of this comments, other than the trail, are just fine with me.
Okay. Thank you. Well, if there's no other.
Commissioner Nancaro, oh, sorry. This is Commissioner Nancaro. You know, I'm, I'm trying to recall. I know Commissioner Mason is not commenting on this, but it seems like that the trail was a big discussion because of the, the block length. I don't know, Mr. Scott or or Mr. Bell, is that, is the block length is still an issue? I don't know, Mr. Scott or or Mr. Bell, is that, is the block length is still an issue without the trail? To break it up?
It's it's still under our, I I I looked at that in the plan review. I I believe the block is it's a hundred or two hundred feet under the thirteen something maximum. So it does, it's not, it doesn't need to be in there to kind of cut, you know, like we were talking in the last, on the last item on the agenda, for that reason. Now, what you guys discussed at the preliminary, I'm I'm not sure, but
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. I know Commissioner Mason did have some concerns, and it may have been the block length or the city utilities going through there. Is that, is that still
The the engineered drawings that they've provided don't have utilities going through that.
Okay, so that may have been resolved.
Yeah, that was one of the discussions when we talked about that before, was one of the possibilities was having the utilities go down back, because there was already an easement and the utilities went through there, and then that would have given them access to the to the utilities, but utilities are being moved.
Okay, so that may
Yeah. The utilities were moved.
Okay.
So maybe I could just give a little bit of background on a couple of points here. I'm not arguing against what the direction that's going, but just for your information, this particular pathway would be similar to what any sidewalk that's next to a lot. In essence, it's going to be like a corner lot. So those properties owners would be responsible for snow removal and those kinds of things. The the alternative, of course, we're going to be talking about block lengths later. Staff still is of the opinion that we need to address some of this with respect to future connectivity and what have you. The alternative for a pathway was an alternative, rather than do this, to have a stub street put in. And so we still are of the opinion that that would be the best in the long run. We respect the planning commission's decision moving forward, and we will accomplish what you want us to do.
Thank you, Rob.
Eric, John, up again.
Okay. John, go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, maybe I misunderstood. John Call is there. He could speak to this. He said that would be the city property. It would be fenced off. There'd be no reason for a resident to go down there and clean that little path off. That's different than a corner lot that doesn't have the fencing on it there for the parkway, so that's my only thing, is it will be city property, and the city, in my mind, and John, I think, could back me up, would be the city's responsibility, not the homeowners.
So, Commission, that our ordinance does say that anyone who abuts a sidewalk is responsible for maintaining it. And I think that's what Rob was talking about with the maintenance obligation on the neighboring landowners, just like any other sidewalk in the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that even makes it worse, John, because I misunderstood. That's a real burden on those people to go around their fence and clean off a use. So, to me, that's a, that's a real negative for the project, even worse than I thought. Thank you.
You know, this is Commissioner Nankaro. Mr. Scott, you kind of remind me of, reminded me of the discussion that we had, and I was trying to remember how we got to this trail access. And it really was, is it seems like there were several options, and some of them included this substrate. Now, right now, it's just a field on the other side, but in the future, obviously, you know, the the idea is is that will likely be developed into a, probably residential neighborhood as well, and to provide that access for the future. And I think we kind of talked around to, well, well, maybe we could get away with the sub without having a substrate if there was a trail system through. And that's, I think that's where how we came to that. So I don't know if that changes anybody's mind, or you know, I was trying to think, why, why did we come up with that trail? But it was in in lieu of the substrate, so now it sounds like we're like we just don't want any future access to to potential neighborhood in the, in the, to the west of of this neighborhood. I just want to make sure that's correct. That's where the thinking
Okay. Yeah, I I personally don't see the length of this, of this street, you know, of such length that we need to have a interconnecting street or or something that way. It's it's under our our ordinance that it doesn't have to, so. But, but again, I I'm of the opinion too, that the less corner lots we have, the better, so.
I think that's correct. We kind of come to the idea, since the block isn't that long, there's no need for that street to go through or trail because it didn't affect the length of the block at all, so connectivity wasn't an issue. There's, there's another thing, too. I, the the street that I live in, live on, I can point out half a dozen places where people have built gates and fences across their backyard so they could get through and access them if the kids want to go through to the back, backdoor neighbors, and it's worked really well. And it's probably the ideal way to to handle it, is just let the neighbors across the back take care of it. Because they will, and it doesn't have to be
Yeah, they like their neighbors, they access them. Yeah. Okay. If there's no more discussion, I entertain a motion. It sounds like from our discussion tonight that the applicant is in favor of abiding by all the TRC and staff review comments, with the exception of this trail that we've talked about tonight, and seem to be okay with eliminating, if I'm understanding the commission right.
So if you're in favor of not having the trail, then you would just adopt Exhibit B two, which shows the subdivision without the trail.
Okay. Okay, so the motion would be to accept the platus exhibit with Exhibit B two excluding the the trail. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion, we give final approval to Pheasant Landing Subdivision. Nineteen lots of Pheasant Hill, First Amendment lot, lot, one lot located in Fox and West Seventy Five East, Upper Drive, under, with the conditions accepted in the planning, the commission's condition of approval, the staff report, and the plat B two minus the trail.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, if not, Commissioner Lunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Nankaro?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Arner?
Yes.
And I vote yes, making note Commissioner Mason is excluded from this discussion item. All right. That is the last of our administrative items. We'll move on to our discussion items. If my agenda will come back up. Item number ten, legislative item of discussion concerning site triangles. Our city engineer will be presenting tonight, Lauren Gardner.
Eric, you probably
Sorry, yeah. What's that?
Today's Lauren's birthday.
Oh, is that why you stuffing his face with cake? Happy birthday, Lauren.
Hey, thank you, thank you. Thirty-seven today.
Yeah, welcome to the mid-thirties, huh?
Lynn, if you could
Brandon's hair is on fire.
Lynn, if you would allow me to share my screen.
You know what? In the middle of the meeting, I can't do that. Can I, can I run it for you?
Yes, you can. Okay, fantastic. I want to talk a little bit tonight about our site triangles. We have quite a few intersections where we have visibility issues, and we want to try to improve our standards and correct some of the problems that we have. So let's, yeah, that's fine. So what are site triangles? Site triangles are a safe line of sight at intersections to allow for both vehicle pedestrian safety and being able to stop on time and see clearly as you make that turn. Next. So here is a a site triangle as a vehicle approaches an intersection, and it shows the area, basically this triangle, that needs to be kept free and clear to avoid any potential conflicts. Next. So like I said, it's to help protect our pedestrians, our bicyclists, motorists as we approach and as we leave these intersections. Okay, next. We have several existing conflicts throughout the city. One, our large utility boxes, retaining walls, fences, trees, shrubs, boulders, and there's several group mailboxes. So I want to show you a few of these. Here is one that has both trees and utility boxes that are in conflict. One thing about the site triangle, any object that is two feet and below is allowed within the site triangle. Those above that, there are a few exceptions, like the power poles and the signs, but this box, which is about three, three and a half feet, is in conflict with our ordinance. Next. Here's some trees and boulders that are in the site triangle. And I just have a bunch of these. Here's, here's some sound walls, some fences that are in conflict with our current ordinance. Next. I've got a series of mailboxes that you'll see, and they're the group mailboxes that we're talking about. Just thumb through these, Lynn, there's three or four different mailbox issues that are within that site triangle. Now, this intersection here is one that's free and clear. We can visibly see as we approach and as we leave an intersection. So there are two types of site triangles as we deal with an intersection. One is a vehicle traveling down the road as he's approaching the intersection, and the other is from the vehicle stopped at a stop sign, ready to turn onto the other street. Next. So this one here is an approach. As the vehicle is approaching from the left, he has a decision point when he sees another vehicle approaching from the, on the other side street. Next. Now, this one here, the vehicle is stopped at the intersection, and he sees both a vehicle approaching from the left and one approaching from the right. And so they have different sized triangles. And so each intersection, whether it's a minor road, a major road, all have these type of site triangles. Next. And this is just showing this one vehicle parked, not parked, but stopped, ready to make a left-hand turn, how the different vehicles one from the left and one from the right, and the site triangles that he has to deal with. And that's the areas we want free and clear. Next. The same thing would happen with pedestrians or bicyclists. We want to have an area that has actually two triangles that overlap each other, and that's the area that we want free and clear. Next. And that's showing this area here. We want anything within those areas. No, turn it back one.
Sorry.
We want everything in this area to be under two feet, or if there are trees, that they be trimmed seven or eight feet and above. I mean, that's the, where we can have limbs hanging, but between that two foot and that seven foot, it allows for the driver of the vehicle to clearly see across that and avoid conflicts. Next. Our current site triangle, based on our ordinance, has a fifty-foot triangle, one triangle only. And it's actually, I show it here from the curb and gutter, but it's actually per the ordinance, fifty feet along the property line. And that doesn't quite meet the requirement that we need to have clear vision in both directions. Next. So I've, I've done some calculations, and I'm, I'm going to give you a few samples of different right-of-ways. The sixty and sixty-six feet right-of-ways are local roads. They get into collectors when you get sixty-six and eighty, and then the hundred and a hundred and thirty-two foot are major streets like Washington and others, so. If Lynn, if you'll just thumb through these, there's four of them here. This is a sixty-foot, sixty-six-foot. This is a hundred foot. And this next one, you can stop right there. This is a hundred and thirty-two foot. Now, here I've got the site triangles that I've calculated based on the speed limits and the configuration of the roadway. And I've also have shown in here the fifty-foot site triangle that's based on our ordinance. Next. So what I am recommending is that rather than we do one for each intersection, I would propose that we have a thirty-foot by a hundred-foot site triangle measured from the top back of curb or the edge of the pavement, if we don't have any curb. And that would be applied to all local streets, all collector streets, but on UDOT roads, we would have them meet UDOT standards, which are very similar to the calculations that I I provided, that I showed you before. And that we would measure that allowable height of any obstructions to be two feet, and that's going to be measured from the adjacent top back of curb. The next slide, if you'll pull that up, this is what I am looking at proposing for alternate to replace that fifty-foot site triangle. So it's two one hundred by thirty-foot site triangles. And those areas now, as you see, it impacts actually less of the private property than our current fifty-foot triangle, but it does extend further into the property along the frontage, but mainly in the park strip area. So with that, I just wanted to see if there's any questions regarding my presentation and Um, so with that, I just wanted to see if there's any questions regarding my presentation and any concerns, so.
Thank you for the information Lauren. I think, I, I like the clarity, you know, we haven't talked about site triangles. You know, other than when they came up for that site plan review on seventeen-hundred North and Washington. Right. Seven-eleven. Um, but I like to see that, you know, being addressed because, I mean, there's the, the one behind Lee's there on three-hundred and UDOT Street where UDOT put the wall up right to the corner. That has just always bothered me because it's so unsafe and, and we want that street to be kind of a you know, pick up more traffic for us to eat, to soften the burden over on Washington, but. So I'm glad that you're addressing that and, uh, and looking at it. I, I, the only question I have is sometimes, you know, like you mentioned, so trees were okay, like, I know there's some subdivisions that will require, you know, a tree, one tree per house or whatever in the park strip. And with a hundred feet long, that, that is the full length of, of that, uh, lot. But you're saying a tree is okay as long as they prune it up to where the bottom branches are seven feet?
Correct. And if it's a young tree, maybe the tree is placed at the far end of the lot rather than closer to the intersection.
Yeah.
And give it some time to grow and it may act like a sign for a while until it grows and then you can start pruning it to, uh, be, keep that clear zone free, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Commends you for, you know, like, the, the scientific way you've approached this and, and it's dynamic for the different situations. Instead of just having a, a one-size-fits-all forty-five foot or whatever, I think this is a lot more.
Yeah. And, and you could actually calculate each intersection and it would be a different site triangle. But trying to make it more simplistic, I chose one that sort of averaged them all out. And that could be applied across the board for all of our local roads.
Yeah. As long as we're on this topic, and I know, I know that our job is in enforcement, but I, I live close to this area and it hits home, uh, the corner of thirty-one-hundred and ten-fifty. Uh, there's a new fence that I believe, I, it probably is okay based on ordinance, but it, it creates a blockage for that site triangle. And every time I try to go left from thirty-one-hundred up to ten-fifty, it's hard to see who's coming downhill or cross ten-fifty. It sure, it sure seems dangerous there.
Yeah, and I, I think what, I think once we adopt this new, uh, change to the ordinance, then we can go about trying to, uh, encourage those property owners to, uh, remove some of those things that are conflicting and especially enforce it on all new properties.
Thank you. Any, any other discussion? I, I would recommend that you, you know, you do make those, that change to our, our ordinance and kind of the way you've explained it seems to work for me. What about? Any other questions or discussion with the commissioners?
Very much in favor.
Alright, thank you.
No objections Lauren, go forward. Thanks.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, uh, our next agenda item, uh, discussion of block lengths. Well, thanks for bringing that up. Eleven, discussion of concerning block lengths. Rob Scott.
Thanks, uh, Chair. Um, I don't have a specific recommendation for you tonight, but I just wanted to give you an update on some of the things that I've been doing as far as the research and so forth. You recall that we had adopted here, I think a year ago, a complete streets policy that identified the significance of being able to design all streets for all modes of transportation. And along with that, uh, this last, uh, discussion, uh, with Pheasant Landing helped us, uh, be able to focus on some of the issues associated with the way that North Ogden has been laid out. Part of it has to do with the topography and the model of linear streets. Uh, they tend to have longer blocks and, and what have you. Um, we are thinking that somehow we ought to at least explore the opportunity to have some smaller block lengths that would integrate more neighborhoods and opportunities for people to connect and, and communicate and so forth. So basically, it's a very short report. I've got some, uh, examples of some other cities and what have you. And I'll be bringing forward some options for you here in one of the upcoming meetings, so. With that, that's, that's my report.
Okay, thanks Rob. I, the one question I did have when I read this line item is that, would it be something worth looking at as block length relates to zoning? You know, when, when in already twenty zone and you might have lots that are a hundred and fifty feet wide or two hundred feet wide. And you go to thirteen-hundred feet on our block length now and you say, oh, there's ten houses, that's, you know, that doesn't seem that big a deal, but if you have that same length in, let's say, an R-one-eight zone or a smaller, and you've got twenty houses on one block, would that be something worth looking at, saying, well, if we want to shorten block lengths or make connectivity as it relates almost more to density than it does an actual measurement? You know?
Yeah, a, a combination of those kinds of things. One of the ordinances I've looked at, actually, it allows for a, a set standard for residential zones, but it has several, separate standards for commercial and manufacturing lengths. And it also, to address that, also, there's a standard for the block perimeter length as opposed to just the specific dimension between intersections. So that's something that, that we'll be exploring and, uh, I, I think it'll be a positive discussion that we can have.
I love that idea, Eric, to have, um, block lengths depending on the zone for two reasons. Um, one, I, I felt like our block length, um, standard had to be applied on mountain road one time when we approved the development there. And I didn't feel like it should be, just because something in my soul told me that, you know, mountain road should be a long windy country road, right? And, and not have intersecting roads and, and, but the, you know, the law was there and, and I felt like we had to have this intersecting road, and the city council agreed with that, by the way. And, and second, as you think about, uh, uh, the, the new, what will be mountain road, or as they talk about this new development, as it goes way up the hill, you know, I, I envisioned some long, um, roads up there that may not have um, bisecting roads. You know, you may go half mile or, or more without a, you know, I'm talking along, right along the foothill. Uh, where intersecting roads just don't make sense, you know, and so I think, um, I, I think it'd have it per zone is, is spot on.
Yeah, that was just something I thought, you know, was, because as you look at, like, UDOT handles it by uh, traffic flow and speed, you know, they're only, they will only allow a road so many feet, you know? Um, if the, if the traffic, if, you know, your density, as far as traffic is concerned, is the road rating and then also the speed of the road. And so kind of taking that same theory and putting it into our, into our neighborhoods and say, well, you know, speed should never be a factor of what we're doing on block lengths, because we don't have any roads that are, all our roads are twenty-five miles an hour unless there are a couple of different roads in the city, so. It's really more probably comes down to the density, which equates to the amount of cars. And so I think that would be a good way to look at it, you know, or at least something kind of look at some options that way, Rob, if you would.
Sure. I, I, and, and something that the city really hasn't looked at, and that is, you've maybe heard the term traffic calming. So that, uh, where we've got these long, I'll call them raceways in some instances. Uh, I'm not talking about collector roads, but mainly local streets. But sometimes, uh, having some of those things balance out, uh, the overall design, uh, for these roadways can make them be a much more function, much more functionality for all of the traffic functions that are there, pedestrians as well as for, for cars, et cetera. So, uh, the last point is that topography is a huge deal and Commissioner Mason, what, your point is right on target. When you get up to very steep, uh, locations and what have you, there it has to be an account, uh, for topography. That's going to come into play with respect to some of these block lengths, because there really isn't any other option in some instances, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Any, any other comments from commissioners on that line item?
No, I just, you mentioned UDOT. I do know that UDOT has some flexibility depending on property sizes and, uh, uh, you know, how, how lots are divided and, and everything, even though in, in some areas, but in the more rural areas like on eighty-nine, Highway eighty-nine, they are pretty easy to get to violate their rules. Uh, because, you know, going, going north on eighty-nine, there's a lot of properties that are way, way, way below, but they're individual properties. And so, yeah, as I think of all flexibility.
By rule, they have to get, they have to allow access on individual properties, but then when it comes to developing, actually having a road connect, then that's when they start limiting it and saying, okay, now it's, and, and it's all part of future, saying a road's going to connect it a certain location and they won't let anything connect for another fifteen-hundred feet. But the individual homes between there are allowed to connect until they have a connection to one of the other roads.
Yes.
Right. So.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we want to move on to item number twelve, remarks from planning commissioners, anything?
Wait a minute.
Planning commissioners? Oh.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry, I'm slap my hand. Slap my hand, just wanted this to go longer, Rob?
Yeah, it's not dark yet.
There it is, right there, slap it.
Okay, any remarks from commissioners?
Uh, it was hard to, it was hard to listen to, to my name being thrown out there as, as part of that discussion without, without commenting, but I thought you guys, uh, you, you took the same decision I think I would have done too. So, uh, I think we did have a good discussion last time on that. This is all back to that peasant hill. And I think I.
Hey Brandon, I'm impressed, I'm impressed that your head didn't implode from not being able to talk, so. You're still with us.
I do love the sound of my own voice, it's, I do. Okay, I'll just shut up. I won't even tell you.
Well, thank you to whomever it was that did the pledge for me. I apologize. I, I looked at the agenda a few days ago and I quote-unquote stopped six-thirty, but it was six, so. I was late.
That's okay, Commissioner Mason, he said most of it.
Okay.
The first I remember, yeah. Oh, say, can you see?
Yeah, he started saying, singing Lean on Me. I, I, I don't know what that was in reference to. Okay, uh, I don't know that there's anything, if, if nobody has anything else. Uh, Rob, do you have anything for us? You got a small little update here on storage facility?
Yeah, well, let's turn it over to Brandon for a minute.
Okay.
Uh, just a comment, um, I've been in contact with, uh, Dan Nixon, um, he, essentially, they, they've taken the path of preparing their own presentation and proposal. Um, I haven't seen it, uh, but they said that they would be, be bringing, regarding, uh, standards for, uh, storage facilities. Uh, he, he said, it sounds like they'll be bringing something to us in the next, uh, month or two. They didn't give me an exact time. But, uh, anyway. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Hey, uh, Rob, do you have anything else?
Yeah, just one other thing is, the staff has been meeting with our consultants regarding the, uh, update of our zoning and subdivision ordinances. And, uh, uh, we're continuing to plow ahead with that project and right now I'm feeling, uh, that we're making some really good progress, uh, specifically to reorganize the code so that we've got, uh, all these extraneous um, standards that are somewhat scattered throughout the code that are going to be uh, organized in a way that is going to be so much more helpful for everybody who's involved with our land use development process.
Okay, well, good. Well, okay, um, John, anything from you tonight?
The, the most important thing is I think that as the group, um, and citizens and anyone have comments on any of these big projects that are coming into the, the city right now. Um, I, it would be very helpful to get that feedback while it's on your mind, um, as opposed to trying to wait and, and consolidate and do it all at a meeting. Um, and specifically, I'm thinking, uh, the biggest projects we have, there were, the, the potential request for a change at Village at Prominence Point, the potential re-change, uh, for Cooperstown, uh, the North Cove Project. Um, there also might be some commercial projects coming in. Um, just because of, of trying to make sure that we are tracking stuff and we don't lose those thoughts that you might have. You know, after you, you have a little nightmare or a, a dream at night and you get, you wake up, you know, have a little piece of paper there, write down your stuff and get it to us, because we want to make sure we're getting all the information out that we can and getting as much feedback as we can, so we don't miss anything on these big projects. We've, you know, the, the North Cove Project is, is a big deal. You know, I think you all kind of understand that, and that's part of the reason it's already taken two years. Or four, four years, uh, when you look at it. Um, but we just need good feedback and lots of feedback. One, it helps the city make sure we make the right decision, but two, it also helps the developer add stuff, so they know what they're getting into. Because we don't, we don't want them to feel like, you know, they've gotten three years into a project and, and they don't get something they thought they had a basic understanding of from the beginning, so let, you know, I, it's okay to be harsh. Um, developers are used to harsh feedback and, and we just need to make sure that we're, we're keeping everything on track. Sorry, that's, that's the longest comment I've made in a long time.
Yeah, yeah, man, come up for air.
I don't mind being harsh with him, as harsh as he was with Lynn for a while earlier. That was, I thought that was a little, uh, abrupt and, and off-putting really, I, um, uh, anyway. So I'm sorry you had to, and I think you do a great job.
I think.
Ha- having worked that, that end of stuff like this, it's, it's hard, right? Like the technology isn't as smooth as you think it would be with these PDFs and, and stuff like that and.
Yeah. Did I add one comment to that? Um, I think that, uh, you know, sort of building on John's comment. Um, you know, I think as humans, we have a tendency to not want to disagree and stuff like that. But there's a, there's a cost to not speaking up, right? Um, you know, because developers have a financial incentive on the line, they're trying to do their jobs and make a living. Um, but, and so it's important to remember that even though we don't want to be disagreeable, we want to do it respectfully, it's important that we speak up both for the interests of our citizens, but it also helps the developers out, not just, um, you know, to go in the right direction, but prevents them wasted time and effort. Um, but at the same time, um, just because we have entertained an application, doesn't mean that, that the city has an obligation to approve something. Um, I, but I think the way to balance that is to be as upfront as you can, uh, as, as soon as possible, so that they do, they can get a real clear picture of where they think it's worth their time and money.
Thank you. Could we, could I get some clarification from city staff about, um, and this, about this point with that, regarding annexation? Because the mayor brought up, you know, hey, I don't, we don't want to see that whole mountain developed or, you know, go up in plains or, or whatever, and I agree with that point. Uh, at the other, on the other hand, I feel like where it's not part of North Ogden City, there, um, you know, it's, it's developable land with, without North Ogden City's involvement, so I feel like we kind of have to sort of play ball a little bit, or else he'll just close that down and, and go to Weber County and make, make his own development. I mean, is that, is that a realistic possibility?
Brandon, this is the mayor, I, I don't mean to interject.
Please do.
Mr. Chairman, may I just say something?
Yeah.
You're right, Brandon, but they can't get anywhere near the density from the county that they would get from the city. So I think that is the the balance there that we need to talk about. John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, the county has a minimum of what? One acre lots?
Half acre.
Is it half acre?
Yes.
Okay. So you can see that there's a little bit benefit of annexing into the city. They can get more density. But you're right, the county could grant them right to develop all the way up to Forest Service land.
And Mayor, I I did tell you one acre this morning, so I gave you the wrong info.
Okay, could you put your hand out there like Rob did?
Just slam it in the door for us. Just slam it in the door.
That's that's the exact kind of information I was looking for, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Because it's it's good to know that he's gaining something from annexation and not just giving up, so.
And Brandon, and and, you know, just another comment there to the the planning commission. If you look at the general plan, it does talk about quite a large regional park, and I agree, that doesn't fit up there. But frankly, you know, depending on what we decide to do, I I still believe there needs to be some contribution, even though we're talking about park impact fees. And the definition of open space is a usable usable green open space. You know, if it's if it's all oak brush. Although John told me I couldn't hunt rattlesnakes in in the oak brush because it's too cold. I got plenty of them up here, so I don't worry about that. But, you know, I just think the consideration of of that, too, what what is the definition of green space and open space? And I think you brought that up too, Brandon, in your comments earlier. So just just a couple thoughts.
Yeah, and I would echo upon all that so everybody understands that, you know, the, like John had said, the big developments that we have coming through the city, you know, these developers, for the most part, all three of them that are going through are willing to work with the city, and they're willing to do. And and so it's partly on us to be upfront with them of what things we want and expect. And, you know, and it and it won't offend them because, you know, the more time and money they spend, any developer, as anybody spends on a project, then the more ingrained to have it their way, they feel. And so the earlier we can give comment, and that goes to the public as well, that, you know, maybe in this attending this or reading the minutes is that is, you know, get those comments to the city by way of email or whatever, an opinion, so that that stuff can be addressed early instead of when they've got a massive, you know, project planned and prepared and ready to move forward, and then half the people want to go a different direction. It's really beneficial to them all, and and we can get as a city a better, a better product out of it, you know? Not not to add, you know, when you talk about big development projects, I had to admittedly think last night it would have been nice for the firemen to be able to ride a gondola up the mountain to fight that fire.
Chairman, could you put your hand out?
Hey, I'm just thinking of public safety and saving our forests, right?
There you go.
One loud nose and just light it on up there.
I I heard the comment that the fire got put out pretty quick, at least down low because it was close to the mayor's house, so who knows?
Yeah, did you get any water dumped on your house, Mayor, from the helicopter or?
Well, but they were flying directly over, but as like I I said jokingly to my neighbors, I've asked the city to protect the north side of the street. I'm not really concerned about the south.
All right, well, anything else with, from anybody tonight?
I have one other item, Chair, and that is last night, the city council approved the civic zone. So I was, a big thank you and shout out to the planning commission for all your hard work. The formation of that zone, I think, is going to benefit the city in the long run. And the next step for us will be with respect to that is preparing a map amendment that would apply that zone to specific city-owned properties.
Hey, Rob, can I just add a comment there? I think it's going to be benefit not only the the city, but as you pointed out, it's going to be a benefit to the citizens. I know in one of my earlier discussions with Chairman Thomas, he indicated under current ordinances, the city pretty much had an open ability to do pretty much what they wanted. So I think this clarifies, as you pointed out, to the citizens what to expect, too. So I think it benefits, if I understand right, you know, the whole, whole system.
Yeah, it just, it just adds one more step to being, you know, open and open and honest with all the residents, you know, and being, making everybody aware. So it'd be a good thing.
When I use the term city, I I mean that the term collectively, that it's the entire city, it's the people that live here as well as city government.
That's a good clarification. I just wanted to make sure because as, as you know, people, I can interpret things differently.
For sure.
Okay. Item number fifteen, motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn?
We have a motion.
With second doubt.
And a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Before everyone leaves, just thank you for your service and your willingness to help our city get better. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for sticking in with us tonight, Mayor.
Always.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.